Okay, ladies and gentlemen, a bit thin on the ground tonight, but yeah, nonetheless, let's go. My welcome and announcements. As I've just said, really, my Christmas, it was just before Christmas, wasn't it? We had our last meeting, was impacted on Covid. Family supposed to be joining us for Christmas. I kept going and buying food and then somebody got Covid so couldn't come. And then the next weekend, the same happened. We finally managed to get together last weekend, yeah, which was good. I haven't done much merril, however, did go to the induction of the Reverend Father John Bosco Bakamba, who is the new Roman Catholic cleric in the parish of St Richard Gwynne, which covers Rhwabon, Corwin and Clangothlin.
Yeah.
Nice, nice little service. And it was nice to have a chat with a bishop, yeah. Not much else happening. It's good to see all the progress that's taking place on Castle Street. And wherever I've been out, there's been nothing other than compliments, really. There was an issue, I believe, on social media with somebody tripping over one of the barriers that's there to protect people. Yeah. But I've not heard anything more about that. Not much else to say, really. Oh, I've been invited to, to my first sort of merril corporate do in Mold in February, which I'm planning to go to. Yeah. Once in eighteen months as mayor to go to a civic event, I suppose is probably still a bit slim on the ground, but never mind. Bob, you're waving.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. It's Robin, Chirk and Clangothlin.
Oh, Robin Chirk, sorry. Sorry. I apologise to Chirk. Right, that's kind of all I've got to say, really. Not a lot, not a lot happened since our last meeting. Statements for the public. I don't believe we got any public tonight, have we?
Not as yet, so.
No, yeah. Okay. Statements from county councillors. Well, unfortunately, I've had, I had a message from Graham Timms about an hour ago to say that he'd been delayed at a family funeral, so won't be able to come to the meeting. And I also have an apology on the next item from Mel Mile. So we haven't actually got a county councillor at the moment, yeah. So I guess they'll have to defer any statements until the next meeting. Apologies for absence. Do you want any, Gareth?
We've got councillor Carroll, councillor Davis. It's his 33rd wedding anniversary and his wife's taken him out for a meal, so it's a problem. But has asked to be considered for the appointment to the Clangothlin Parks Project because he has got some track record in it, apparently, going back when he was county councillor. So he would be interested in supporting that group.
Okay, thank you. I've got Peter Carroll as well, Mel Mile, yeah, and Graham Timms. Haven't heard anything from councillor Lovelock, have you?
No.
She sometimes has difficulty getting on, so I'll keep my eye on my phone. Yeah. No, not heard anything yet. Okay. Declarations of interest? No, thank you. Minutes to authorise the chairman to sign the minutes of the previous meeting. Is anybody?
I propose that they're true record of the meeting.
Yeah, proposed by councillor Haddie, seconded by councillor Lube. Anybody against? Okay, thank you. Financial reports?
Yeah, the first chairman is the standard. You've probably seen it and I don't know it off by heart now. It's churned out every year. It's the report for us to formally appoint our internal auditors. It is a requirement to issue them a formal letter stipulating what they are required to do for us. And all that is laid out in the Good Practitioners' Guide on Accountability, which is the basis for, as I say, the audit. As you know, we have for a number of years appointed JDH Business Services. And through that, we've got a good working rapport, which has been proven particularly good during lockdown as well, because we've quick transition to doing everything online. And it's been very useful way of working. And obviously, it gives us that continuity in each report, highlights what should be done. And then in the following year, they pick up whether we did implement, here's councillor Lovelock, whether we did implement the actions that we were required to do. And then obviously, each year, they produce an action plan for the following, for, you know, first term to take this next year if there are any errors or things. So the recommendation is that on the basis of continuity of service, we've had no problems, the prices have been reasonable, that we reappoint JDH Businesses as limited as our internal auditors for the forthcoming audit.
Anybody got any comments? Welcome, Robin. Yeah.
Sorry to be late.
Anybody got any comments? Anybody like to propose we go along with the proposal? We appoint JDH councillor Lube. Anybody second that? Councillor Keddie, thank you very much. Anybody against that? Thank you. Financial statements?
I'll just share the papers, just explain what's going on a bit. As I said, I've said previously, month ten is obviously this, that's tax month. We haven't got the payroll yet from our payroll provider. Seems to go out of sync for some reason, so it may be more appropriate to start reporting in arrears on that. The other one, the two TBAs again, to explain what that is. Good Energy. There are two accounts with Good Energy. One was the Centenary Square, where we seem to be paid twice, in essence. I think we've paid the previous supplier and Good Energy. I am trying to get in touch with them, but the phone calls take an inordinate length of time. So by the time you've spent half an hour, you decide to start again. And then the second one, there is seems to be some kind of a charge when we first transferred one of the electrical accounts, the O17390. And again, I'm querying that and waiting the email back. So obviously, I won't be paying those until I've got clarification as to why. That is, so what I think is discrepancy on that, an unnecessary charge. The rest is fairly straightforward. Membership fee is my annual fee to be a fellow of the Institute. What is it? Fellow Society of Local Clerks and Councils. Training fee was a fee for training I've undertook with the Wandois Wales training. And there are two outstanding invoices which came through, I think it was August, September, when I was in hospital and ill, which I missed from the cleaning and they'd been aligning me over those. So that's why there's a lump of ultra clean cleaning services through there. The other one is quarterly copier leasing charge and lease insurance on top. And just, just not for now, but I think it was councillor Haddie that well back said, why don't we just buy a fairly robust photocopier? And I think the way things have gone during lockdown, we hardly use photocopying now, obviously, because there's nobody in the office. And printing's been done quite successfully on, you know, little, on a smaller printer in my home. And other services, you know, we're just not providing. So I think when we come to the end of this lease, which possibly is the end of next year, it might be worth considering a cheaper alternative going forward. But I certainly would like to bring, I'll bring a report forward on that in the future. But that's just by way of information. There's nothing, nothing else added since the agenda went out, chairman. But any questions, we'd love to take them.
Anybody got any questions? Councillor Palmer?
What's the Blue Box same-day courier, Gareth?
A Blue Box courier was a charge to send the inserts. This is a rather disappointing discussion. We, if you recall, we offered some money way back prior to lockdown to shape my Clangothlin for materials. What they decided to do was do a mail-out. They had the mail-outs produced and then we had to send them to the distribution centre at Royal Mail. They were sent on the 20th of December and they had to be distributed from the 2nd of January and Royal Mail had lost them. So that will hopefully be coming back in because I'll be making a claim against Royal Mail. I've got evidence of it signed off at the distribution centre by a member of staff on the Royal Mail forms and on the courier forms. So it's really disappointing. So that will come back in in due course and will be reimbursed. But that's what it was for. But unfortunately, you know, didn't happen. Well, it happened. They delivered it, but the Royal Mail failed on their side completely.
Are we, just, just of interest, mentioning, you mentioned Sheikh Michael and Gotham. I noticed today that the consultations being.
Yeah, that's, that's why.
Extended to mid-February?
Yeah, that's why. Because the idea was just, these forms gave you till the end of January to comment. And it would, you know, every postcard would have gone into every home, every household to allow people to, because of the work they did just before Christmas, they realised that the use would extend it. So what, what the group have decided, and I think Phil's put it up today, you're right, that they'll do a further extension till, till mid-February now, to.
Are we likely to see the document before the end of this term?
Oh, yes. Yeah, you'll have it in March or April.
We will have it in March. It'll be completed by then.
Yeah, we're going to press on and get it done. It, it was just, as I said, it would have been really nice if Royal Mail had come up trumps. But I mean, in some respects, there's probably thousands of, I don't know, wine magazines going into this distribution centre. Now, it's basically like two lids at the top of an A4 box stuck together. But, you know, they did sign for it. They did take it. And they, they lost it.
Yeah. Look forward to seeing the finished document in March.
Yeah, hopefully.
Any other questions? Anybody like to propose we accept these? Thank you, Mr Palmer. Councillor Greenley seconded it.
Again, the financial statement's been sent out. Obviously, not a lot to report because not a lot has changed. Apart from disappointing fact that, you know, the new restrictions at Level Two has resulted in all cancellation of bookings from, for the whole by Twenty Club and the Young'uns till the end of March, which, well, March and after, sorry, massive flight, which means we will not get any income from those bookings till the new financial year. So it's, we still have to have some due diligence on our expenditure. But fortunately, as I said through previous meetings, we haven't had to call on the Unity Brands Fund. So there's a bit of a blather there. But it's disappointing, but it's not unexpected when people shut you down, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any comments, observations, questions? Anybody like to propose we accept those? Nobody? No. Councillor Lovelock, thank you. Somebody second it, please? Councillor Brindley, thank you. Any no objections? Good. Thank you. Town clerks' reports?
Yeah, just a one, well, apart from planning, obviously. If you recall last meeting, Jessica gave us a presentation and we're offering a letter of support, which was quite easy to do at the last meeting. But if you want to formally appoint somebody, as they asked to sit on a group, obviously, we've got to present that to the council.
Councillor Haddie?
I'd like to propose councillor Palmer to represent the council on this group.
Seconded by councillor Lovelock. We also have a proposal through Gareth for councillor Davis. Would anybody like to second that? Nobody seconded in that? So there's no objection. Councillor Palmer is duly elected, appointed as a representative on the Clangothlin Pots project.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Planning applications?
Well, it's, yeah, sorry, sorry. Yeah, it's after all that.
Say again, sorry?
Sorry, it's councillor Keddie's.
Yeah, councillor Keddie. You're muted again.
I'm just unmuted. You should be able to hear me. Welcome, welcome. Yeah, there's only one in this, this month, which if I just switch my screen over, it's for Four Fairways View at Brindethill. It's, it's for an erection of a single-storey extension to the rear of the property. And at the rear there, it's, there's a retaining wall and a bank that goes up. So it's not overlooked by anybody. It's out of sight, no access changes or, or anything really. So I can't see us being able to object to anything of it.
The proposal is no objection. Anybody against that? Okay, thank you. No objection.
So we'll take both, obviously, because they're an interlinked listed building.
They are interlinked, so yes.
Yeah, the second one is, yeah. Yeah, we've taken both. Certificates of decision? Old Armory Grant, do you want to say anything about these, Paul, or not?
They're just to be noted, those.
Just the eight, six, eight, seven and nineteen ninety-one, similar to the one above. They've got ordinary plus listed building consent. So rather than rip right them twice, I just looked at the references, chairman.
Okay, thank you. Planning correspondence?
Yes, chairman, we've had an item from the Welsh Government, planning director, which I've given the full report. And there's a bit of a summary about the planning legislation for policy on second homes and short-term holiday lets. I think it's fairly straightforward document. And as I've said from quick analysis, it's the usual, can you answer the questions format? And the bulk of them, I don't think there's anything particularly in a town like Clangothlin where we have got pressure from Airbnbs and conversions. A lot of what is said in the sort of general content is, is quite appropriate. But I think there are some specific questions below to change the use class orders, which members might want to reflect on. And if they're happy, we'll put them forward as comments.
I think there are a few councillors, I think, have got some comments and observations. Did you, I'm sorry, Gareth, did you just say you didn't think there was any pressure in Clangothlin from Airbnbs?
No, that there is pressure.
There is pressure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And conversions and, and obviously, well, it's in my statement, the knock-on effect on house prices, affordability, lack of, lack of starter homes and all that.
Yeah. Councillor Keddie?
My views is quite simple. I think doing a quick tot-up, there were eighty-seven Airbnbs in Clangothlin and none of the youngsters can buy a house anywhere. So I think, having planning permission, I'd love to tax them at fifty percent tax. But there we go, we can't do that. But I think having planning permission is certainly a way of perhaps putting a lot of people off doing it.
Yeah. Pembrokeshire have somehow managed, I've made to get through something where holiday places are double rated, yes?
Well, yes, chairman.
So it can happen at one. Say again?
That was a report we considered before about taxation, remember? So there is a move to, and I think councillor Keddie's quite correct. I think if, if they're identified because they had to have plan permission, then I'm sure, pretty sure, that the Treasury Department or the county councils will be after them for paying appropriate rates for that use.
When we, when we have questions, like the first question now, do we not, in our observations, need to add something as to why they ought to be strengthened? You know, national polling policy should be strengthened in this aspect and has not been widely used. But, and in our context, we've got illustrations, eighty-seven houses have been sold in the last few years and now Airbnbs, thus reduced in the housing market and also increasing prices. I, I have a neighbour who's just sold their house and that's gone for a rental, yeah. We're not sure whether it's a holiday rental or a rental rental yet. Bob might know, he shares our neighbour, but it's another house that's gone off, yeah, the market and potentially isn't going to be available, not just for purchase, but for rent by somebody locally. I don't know of a second property, which in the last few weeks, it's a, a quite, quite a, a large bed and breakfast that sold to a local nursing home business to house staff because they can't find anywhere in Clangothlin to rent. Yeah. So in our observations, can we not add the reasons why we think that is true, Gareth?
I think the first one, I totally agree, yes, we can. The top one is just that the policy hasn't been widely used. It's there. But, you know, some, I mean, I don't want to cast dispersion. But say you're Rondicun and Taf, you wouldn't necessarily be that worried about a policy on second homes, whereas Carradigian and, as you say, Pembrokeshire have been proactive. So that's just reinforcing the fact that people should know there's a policy they can use. It would be useful. I think all the commentary now, the eighty-seven Airbnbs can fit into the next one. You know, what is the positive consequence of planning measures? We know there are eighty-seven Airbnbs which, you know, are not on the radar. If you make them have a planning permission, they are then, you know, they then fall into the system. So yes, we can add that in there in our second, second box and any other statistics we've got would add as well.
Councillor Palmer?
Sure. I'd like to include, Gareth, ensuring an adequate supply of sites for new homes for local people and long-term lets. Because it's not just, it's not just about having houses that people can buy, it's housing available for long, long-term lets. Because I'm, I'm, I know that the hospitality sector, the care sector, if they're going to get, they need people to come in. And if they've got nowhere to live, they can't get them. And it impacts on both care and the hospitality.
Just see which section. Yeah, I could add that to the third box, which impinges on it a bit. Outlying prevalence of second home limit supply of effectively affordability for properties in Clangothlin. So I can add about rental, diminishes the rental.
The other one was limiting, limiting the number of properties that could be used as second homes and short-term holiday lets may offer the potential of more housing available for the indigenous Welsh and non-Welsh population.
Yeah, but the question's about the Welsh, that's why. The question is asking about how you would support Welsh, not non-Welsh.
Okay.
That's why it's answered. I mean, it's about the influx of non-Welsh speakers into predominantly Welsh-speaking areas. They're getting out there. So that's, that's why it's responded in that way. It's very difficult to say that because obviously, you know, houses don't speak Welsh. People do.
So I, I, I may say I'm, I'm a strong advocate of us supporting and doing as much as we can in terms of the Welsh language. But that box, is that box suggesting that if you can't speak Welsh, yeah, it doesn't apply to you the need for a house to rent at a price?
Well, it's the Welsh.
Indigenous, indigenous population, there's a lot, there's, there's a majority of, I would say the majority of indigenous Welsh people in Clangothlin are not necessarily fluent Welsh speakers.
No, but the question's being posed by the Welsh government is, will this policy help the Welsh language? And the answer is potentially it could. It would retain indigenous Welsh speakers to stay in the area, wouldn't it? Because they can afford to stay here or they could rent somewhere. At the moment, if they can't afford to buy a house or rent, they're moving away. It's not stopping anybody else going anywhere. Other ethnic minorities quite prevalent in Clangothlin, you know. So it's, it's not, it's not that I, that's the question posed by the Welsh government.
I understand. Councillor Lovelock?
I think Harvey had his hand up before me. So I don't know if he still wants to make his comment.
No, it's all right. I was just inquiring what, because I didn't realise this was posed by the Welsh government. I was just wondering what power you actually have as a town council, just like on about like taxation and things. What influence does us answering this? This is just me wondering. What influence does us answering this actually? Will this invoke like increasing taxes for Airbnbs or just about the influence we have?
Well, as I said, Harvey, that this is obviously just, there's been a series of consultations, one on the, whether you could charge fifty or a hundred percent extra on residential properties that convert. So that we've, we've had a consultation on that, we've commented on that. And then this is the, I think it's a three-pronged approach. It's looking at the sector, looked at how, how we, how these people pay their rates and, and whether they have to pay non-domestic rate, which, you know. And then this is the third prong, I think, coming from the planning side, to try and create, I've been in planning for longer, you'd like to know really. And affordability has been a problem always. I mean, it's affordable at the first time, then after people want to sell it and make a profit. So it is a, you know, a very difficult nugget to crack. But at least it's trying to create some, some playing field, shall we say, that the people that just buy and change their Airbnb would have to comply to the same as somebody who's going to do a change of use from, you know, shop to office or whatever. So it's trying to bring that standardisation in. And then I think ultimately, once, as I say, they're on the list, as it were, you know, and they, I'm sure that there will be some follow-up from the rating department to ask them what their, what their uses of their promises are.
Well, I'll continue to, in a second, councillors, just answering Harvey's question in terms of influence. I, I, I guess, as one town council, little town council in Wales, individually, we've got little impact, but it's like a whisper that's whispered by a thousand people, isn't it? If, yeah, if all of the local authorities in, in, in town councils in Wales are of a similar view, then the little whisper that we make becomes a bit of a shout to the Welsh government and they're more likely to take notice of it.
Yeah.
Councillor Haddie, you've had your hand up for a long time.
Councillor Lovelock was ahead of me and then I followed her around.
Go on, councillor Lovelock.
Thank you very much. So I had, it's two thoughts on this. On the Chitsoe webinar last year, if you remember, we had a lady called Jane Abbott, I think it was, from Dembisher. And, and she actually reflected that there was only three families in Clangothlin that were on the Dembisher register as looking for affordable housing. So I have followed up with her for this meeting to, to try and get an update on that situation because I don't believe at that time there was widespread recognition of the Titeg website. So since then, we've, we've tried to get that out there through the Chitsoe website, through the, the notice boards, encouraging families, people to register on that, on that Titeg website, because that is what Dembisher then use for, for tracking that. So when I hear an update, but I, I won't, before the meeting, obviously, but when I hear an update, I'll circulate that. So we can see if it's, if we can get a better assessment of what the demand is. So it was just an observation. But then I was wondering, it's quite interesting that in this whole document, there's no reflection on the, the climate implications of, of second homes. And I'm wondering if that's something we could find a way to incorporate. So construction and building are driving fifty percent of, of emissions globally. And the fact that people are having second homes then means that the people are, we're still looking for affordable homes for, for the population that wants to live here. And therefore, it's driving further building. So two, two things of that. One is, you know, we, we want to try and encourage people to get the houses built, no, houses for the, the people that live here before second homes. But the second is then, if there are houses that need renovating, then that's also incentivising that would, would also reduce emissions by around sixty percent. And so if there was a way to kind of capture that from our climate and ecological emergency perspective, I think that's, that's a really important and underrepresented aspect of, of the paper.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Counselor Haddie?
I'm always very dubious about this sort of tinkering with the social setup by means of the planning process. Uh, the intrinsic problem is that people can't stay in their neighbourhoods and they cannot afford housing because the economic opportunities don't present themselves to enable them to afford it. So that's the, that's the underlying problem. Um, the problem is if you, if you transfer the criteria to the planning, it then becomes a social, um, uh, sorry, a, a language, um, problem, or it becomes a cultural problem. Whereas the underlying problem remains the same, and that is economics. What we should be arguing, um, instead of all this tinkering, except to the short term, is that what we're really talking about here is the need for social housing. And if there was adequate social housing and funding for that, we wouldn't be discussing this sort of matter. And that would solve the problem, whereas all these do, all these do is, is open up the opportunity for even bigger problems than we currently got.
Yeah.
There we go, that's it.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes, I'm looking at, uh, question four here. Uh, are there any scenarios where by use as a dwelling house, under, under use, C3 could become unclear? Uh, and to paraphrase, I think it's if you, if you live in a house for 184 days a year, uh, then, uh, it's considered a dwelling house. But if you're on oil rigs or something like that, the fact that you're on the oil rig contributes to your 184 days. And my concern here was, uh, and it says, please provide examples. When I was working at Brentisilio, I was required, um, to work to live on site. Part of my contract. Because we were going to lose, we were going to have to move at some point, we bought a house and let it uh, on a long-term let. However, I could have let it as a holiday home uh, un- under the rules that exist, and I, and, and I don't think that's particularly a good idea. My sister-in-law, um, went into, into long-term residential care for a number of years and her apartment could have been let as a holiday let as well, because that would have accounted. So those seem to be anomalies that haven't been, um, that haven't been included uh, or, or, or looked at in, in this question four. So whether you want me to refer these to you, Gareth, or whether you think I should put it in, I'm quite happy to do it. But I think it's a, a potential issue, um, that, that could be replicated, particularly when so many older people, uh, in Clangothl will be moving out of the house and have moved out of the houses in full-time care and their, their relatives could let them as holiday lets.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, that's any, any comments about, and I mean, I've just noticed, to pick on Counselor Lovelock's comments as well. Question 16 is a catch-all. Have we asked a number of specific, sorry, have we, I'm sorry. We have asked a number of specific consultation questions. If you have any related issues you're not specifically being addressed, please use the space below to raise them. So we can add about, um, all these issues that, that we can add it a, a, a box at the end, we'll pick up on the climate change stuff, um, that we declared a climate emergency. Uh, pick up, actually, Counselor, if Counselor Lovelock can pen that into a quick email, just, just bullet points. Like, yeah, I mean, obviously the other one is the fact that, um, people tend to come in by car to these Airbnbs and you know, we, and there's added pressure to the infrastructure as well, isn't it? So there's, there's further carbon footprints coming here and they usually bring all their food in and then push off enough.
Just a, a, a couple, a, a, a couple of points. I think somewhere in it, we need to, um, um, discuss the impact that people buying houses for holiday lets potentially removes a rental house from the rental market. This isn't just about the availability of new homes because as Counselor Haddie says, a lot of people can't afford to buy a new house, it's about renting a house. And if a place is taken up as an Airbnb, uh, uh, instantly that removes a rental house from our rental stock and a lot of the houses that are being snapped up are one-up, one-downs, two-up, two-downs, sort of the townhouses around and about, which would be the homes that, yeah, people perhaps would naturally rent, yeah, as an, as an initial place to live. So that, those houses taken off the market if they're sold on the market as a second home. Um, there's also, there's, there's also just two other things, um, uh, that, that came to my mind. One, I think we mentioned last time, which was if, uh, a house is sold as an Airbnb, um, and there isn't somebody living in it all of the time, it's got to have an impact on our local economy. Because, you know, if somebody is only living in a house 50% of the time, they're only going to be spending their money locally 50% of the time. Whereas if it's somebody that's living in a house all of the time, they're contributing, uh, uh, to us, yeah? All, all, all of the time that they're living in a house. And the other thing is, and I know it's grey, and, uh, uh, Mel Mailer now would be saying it if he were here. And I'm not sure whether it's not the last thing, but it's worth mentioning again. Uh, Airbnbs, if they become businesses, they don't provide Clangothl with any income anymore individually. Uh, because the money then goes to the Welsh Government as a business rate. Uh, and given the fact that staycations, and having spoken to a couple of people that run bed and breakfasts, uh, the season has got a lot longer in the last 18 months, yeah, and they anticipate that carrying on for a, you know, for, for a while yet. Um, so potentially our income is reduced. Anyway, Robin?
Um, it's a really important point and, um, I, I think that the, like, maybe the way to raise it with Welsh Government is something around the, the social value, uh, side of things as well, because, um, you know, what they're looking for in investment from the Welsh Government is, is keeping money in the communities. Um, and, um, and making sure that that's for the benefit of communities. So like, there is a example down in, oh, sorry, not down, it's over in Antystineog, Blainafystineog, the, the, there's a company there, um, a, a community interest company, uh, that runs the mountain biking, but they've also noticed this problem there where all the local housing was, was going into Airbnbs. So what they've actually done is they took on some Airbnbs as a community interest company. Um, and then, but they're channeling the profits back into the community interest company that's supporting jobs and training, uh, opportunities for young people within, uh, Blainafystineog, um, trying to get more people trained up uh, in, in, in kind of growing areas of the economy. Um, so whether there's like an opportunity for redirecting some of the money in that kind of community benefits, um, social value type, uh, type way, it would be interesting to look at. Um, because as you say, otherwise it's, it's all just flowing out of, of the town. Um, and economically that obviously has an impact, but also socially, like where my family's from in Devon, there's numerous examples of where communities haven't taken action. Um, and, and you end up with 60% holiday homes and just nobody there in winter. And it, the, the cycle that John mentioned about, you know, jobs and things, then, then you're in a decline position and those jobs won't come, um, because there's, there's no one to, to be buying or, or engaging in, in those businesses.
Uh, Counselor Palmer?
Uh, I, I meant to mention this earlier and, and omitted to, to mention it. Uh, we, we have an aging population in Clangothl, um, no doubt about it. And if we don't have the young people coming in, the community suffers because, um, as we get older, we are less inclined to put the effort and energy in, into the community. Uh, so we need that, uh, regeneration, uh, from younger people.
Yeah. Uh, you forgot to add present company accepted, yeah, to that last statement, Counselor Palmer.
I didn't.
Yeah, with all due respect, yeah?
Chairman, it's a very useful debate and, um, if throw everything to me in an email, and then I'll, I'll do a box, do it, question 16 and send it back around for you to comment before I, I think it's 17th of March we've got, so.
I was just going to ask Shay and Harvey, uh, uh, as, as, as what we're discussing probably has, uh, potentially a greater impact on you when your parents eventually get round to pushing you out of the nest to fly, yeah, and flap your wings, yeah, have you got any observations or comments?
Um, well, I, I think it's brill-, well, not brilliant what's happening, I mean, the fact that it's being addressed. I think, I think even, um, I think it is an issue, yeah. I think, I think there's a lot of towns in Wales that feel of the same issue, though I think i- is this sent to all town councils or is it only if you've requested it?
No, it's sent to everybody.
Sent to everybody.
Well, I think something, well, hopefully will come of it because I think it is needed.
Yeah, Shay?
Um, well, I th-, I've, I've been known of the second home issue for quite a while because my, my sister's boyfriend, they, they live in, uh, Bentlick and Anglesey. And obviously it's a huge, second homes is a huge issue there and he, and I think I would, I, I, as Harvey said, it's glad that it's being addressed as, as an issue because, um, like, for example, myself, I'm going to be looking potentially in the next four, five years at moving into a house. And at this rate, the, I'm going to be moving to a place, to, to a one-bedroom flat that I can actually afford, whereas a house that I could have afforded is being taken over by a, an Airbnb. So I think it's, yeah, I think it's, it's good that it's being addressed, definitely.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Cuddy?
Just a quick point. I think, um, Gareth, you said the 17th of March. I think on the letter it says, uh, all responses by the 22nd of February.
February, yeah. The other one next, when it's 17th of October. Yeah, we got plenty of, that's why I thought it was January.
If, so if, if, um, if you could, um, uh, let Gareth have, yeah, any comments that you've got, yeah? And then, as you said, he'll, he'll recirculate the document. And if we've got until the 27th of February, perhaps we can approve the final document at our next meeting, Gareth?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah?
We'll bring it back for final ratification.
Back to our next meeting with a modified version based upon this debate. That was good, thank you very much.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you for that.
Uh, correspondent, Gareth?
Oh, very, very quiet over Christmas. And I tend to send you the things which I think you need to see, forward them. Uh, this is just economic development are regularly sending these business bulletins. Um, it's just a thought actually, would members like them to be on the circulation list, please? Rather than just ask me to see them, I could ask whether they could include all members for certain things.
That'd be useful.
Okay, and then you'll see them. Uh, rather than me just forwarding them on, I'll just see if they, you're going to be added as a, on, on the group list. If not, I'll just forward them. And the same Simon Baines, um, again, I can just forward that each month if you want. Uh, he has very regular newsletters.
Okay. Um, okay.
That's the list, and the rest I said I would have sent to you.
Reports to the town council, uh, reports to stuff that's happening, anybody kind of thing, yes, Mr Palmer?
Uh, it's not a written report, but we're still, uh, we're still banging away with the, um, footpaths. We've got a meeting coming up on, on Monday. Uh, there, there was quite a break because, uh, being busy, but we, we've, once we've had that meeting and produced a report, how long we can, we'll keep going, I don't know, it rather depends on the group. Um, a lot, and a lot depends on recommendations we've made to, uh, countryside services.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but of course, with the wind that we had, a lot of footpaths have been uh, unable to use them because of trees coming down. I suppose we'd be pretty tied up on that.
Uh, anybody else, Counselor Haddie?
Uh, just on the subject of footpaths, so, Jim, um, I, I understand that the, it is, it's not completely disconnected. The, um, the, I understand that the Chain Bridge, uh, hotel has come up for sale and we do have a permissory right-of-way across the front of the hotel. Uh, I'm not sure how, um, secure that is in terms of, uh, between, um, any incoming purchases, but it's something we need to be mindful of and that would be useful if we could include that within the footpath, particularly the definitive map of the other side.
Gareth?
Yeah, it's on the definit-, it's on the registered deed that, that, that the council and others have the right to pass and repass over that area of land. Uh, but Counselor Caddie's probably quite correct, it might not be worth, not getting my English wrong here, sorry, Covid fog head on. Um, it might be appropriate to contact their solicitors to remind them that it's in release, uh, in the deed.
It's the chat, it's the chat that it's, that whatever's there is robust enough, isn't it, for us to?
It's robust enough, but, you know, they may not mention it sooner.
Yeah.
Then we may get the, you know, gates going up and better to have it.
Palmer?
Uh, I don't disagree, but, uh, we, we, we're confined to looking at Clangothl rather than Clantacilio in terms of footpaths in Clangothl.
Well, there is, there is, can I just mention, there is a, a county council-owned land which goes from the other side, Clangothl side, not Clantacilio side, the river, uh, the Chain Bridge itself that goes up and under the railway. Um, we, and, uh, we, we do have the base of that, uh, where the bridge peers are, a part of the transfer of ownership of the land, was, came with that. But there was also supposed to be a right-of-way exercise with Dembisher County Council and from there up and up onto the A5. But like most things, Dembisher County Council's legal department and particularly their footpath department, they'll take 25 generations to do anything at all. So that's something that needs to be chased up on.
Yeah, okay. John?
Uh, yes, um, uh, Adrian Walls had a heart attack, um, so he'll be out. I'm not sure whether he's even available just now, but also it's worth checking with the AONB because they were very concerned about access through the Chain Bridge and it was being stopped. So perhaps we can contact the AONB and mention that this is one of our concerns so that they can follow it up as well.
Yeah. Sorry, Robin, you're on, you're on the bottom bit of the screen, so you need to wave vigorously, yeah?
That's all right, no problem.
Top, yeah?
Um, it was a separate point, but, um, uh, so are people happy to carry on, moving on from the Chain Bridge?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, uh, so, um, it was just really on the Chitsoe webinars, so we had the, um, the last, so the, the first webinar last week, um, looking at travel and transport, uh, three speakers, um, uh, one from Drosy Bikes in Clangothl. We had the active travel lead from, uh, the, uh, from Dembisher and also a really interesting example of, uh, from Snowdonia of, um, how they're looking to get people out of their cars, very similar situation to Clangothl. Way more people wanting to come than, than spaces available, so, um, it's a really nice example. The recording is available, I believe, um, uh, Gareth, if you could confirm, because I know there was some SharePoint uh, challenges, um, and, um, and then the second one is coming up next, um, next Wednesday, the 26th, uh, that's being hosted by Mel, uh, on, um, and that one will be on culture, tourism and business, I think.
Business.
Um, uh, so, uh, since, again, speakers from, I think it's the, uh, uh, Reece Davies from the East Edford, Ian Lebon and, uh, another speaker.
A, 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 sorry, DCC Business, Economic Development.
Oh, yes, the Four Great Highways, I, I've heard of that. Um, so, um, so, yeah, so if, um, we did put information in the Chitsoe newsletter that went out around town and we've got obviously, uh, information on social media that we're sharing, but if there's other ways of getting the word out, then please do let us know because the, the numbers are always higher watching it afterwards than during, but it is nice to have a nice chat during the event.
Robin, because I need, I need a couple of minutes for an old man moment, okay? So just keep going.
Yeah. That's a lot I'd like to confirm. Um, this is now posted on our Facebook channel, Clangothl, sorry, YouTube channel. I have sent you the link because I, I, in the past, I could freely put things onto Chitsoe, but it seems to have stopped me. I can't, and I've sent you the graphic for the next, um, series, next one.
I got that.
Because again, that, that won't allow, for some reason, I could post that.
It does come through, but in a strange way now. It does come through, but in a strange way now, I don't know why.
So they're there. And obviously I put it on our social media. And I'll, I'll try to stick it as many cases I can. And I'll do, I call an email burst to all the community groups again just before, and I'll invite all members again to keep an eye out either for your diary or a random email saying you've been invited on the 26th.
It was a really, really good discussion in the last one. It took, it was, it took the full hour, sometimes they finish just before an hour. But the presentations were, were really, really short, to the point, and then a really nice discussion afterwards. So, you know, while, while we're still in, in lockdown type situation, it's not a bad use of an hour, either live or, or afterwards. I'll get that shared.
With great relief, I return, thank you.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to go and put the kids to bed, so I'll do some publicist.
Anybody else going to fit to report? Before we, just before we go Gareth, can
You've got councillor Gridley's.
Councillor, oh, councillor Gridley.
Queen's Platinum Jubilee report.
Oh, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just wondering, we've got the Platinum Jubilee coming up this year and nothing's been mentioned about it. I know it's not till June, but it's amazing how the time sort of creeps up on you. And I wondered, well, you've read the report, put together with some ideas off the top of my head. But just a few questions I wanted to ask. Number one, does the council want to lead to do anything to celebrate this? I think it's going to be the one and only time that we actually do a Platinum anniversary. So a hell of a thing to be able to do. Does anyone know if there's any funding around that could be tapped into? Or would funding be available? How do we get a group of people together? Just, I'm, I'm just throwing it open to say, first of all.
I was just wondering on the funding bit, whether Rotary might have some funds that they could put towards it to help.
There is a funding availability coming up, but it would have to be put in pretty quickly.
Yeah.
But I, first of all is, do we want to do anything?
I would, I would say yes, I'm not sure what. One of, one of my observations would be that although we as a council won't, won't actually be the same come June, unless we start to think about it and start to organise something, it's going to be very difficult for the next council to organise anything because they will have one meeting, yeah, which will be their inaugural meeting before the date when things need to happen, so.
Could, chairman, could I just, there is funding for the lottery. But that's more, I, I would, I think that's more lasting legacy, so that would be like tree, tree planting. And I've investigated the beacons, who suggested they're not expensive as you think. They are even higher than £400 in a propane thing. But that would obviously take some negotiation with ANOB and the council. Street closure orders under the Police Act, we could do those on behalf of people. So if there's a, a street that wanted to close, we could do it at no cost for them. You know, I remember, I think we did one for Oak Street once for the VJ of Alba, or VJ there, I can't remember. Fireworks, they always go down well, you know, we have a local fireworks for Christmas. And something around the square, obviously, enclosure Bridge Street. Because it's such a lovely extended square now, thanks to the, the works. It, it would be lovely to have a series, you know, staging again and a series of events. And Charlie had suggested, speaking to New Dot, to see if they could do screenings of the coronation during the day over the weekend and, and the snippets of the Queen's life. So we've had a thought about it and, and obviously you could, going forward, you have an allocation of community grants, you, you could top slice that if, if the council couldn't find sufficient funds and there was a shortfall, then you could take it from there going forward.
So really what we need to do is get a group of people who are interested, taking it forward. I know, I, I'd like to volunteer for it. And if other councillors or youth councillors would like to come forward and then get other people within the community who are interested to come on board.
See Shay's vigorously nodding his head.
Yeah.
And so I think we've got a second volunteer.
Well done Shay, you're on board.
What about Harvey, what about, what about trying to get the school involved in something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I think that's what we need to do, yeah, is get, get the group together and find out where we can target.
Can I suggest that we retain it within the town council's offices? Because otherwise it will just get wafted out and lost.
That, that's, that's the choice of the council, yeah.
I think it'd be good to get other community organisations involved in it though.
That's not what I'm, I, I'm not suggesting that we don't, I'm suggesting that we retain control of it and organise it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's fine, so.
Any wanting to help? I'll, I'll put my hand up, yeah?
Okay, so.
Anything else?
Well, I know, as I said, Charlie has, I, you know, to get the town hall involved and New Dot, so obviously we'll get involved staff side, so.
Okay, great.